Good afternoon, everyone. Please remain standing while the mayor's chaplain offers prayers.
We begin in the name of our Lord, the most kind, the most beneficent. O our Lord, as we have gathered here today, we ask you to inspire inner guidance in our affairs and in the matters at hand. And we ask you to deliver us from the shortcomings within ourselves and our actions. O our Lord, we are meeting today in a spirit of cooperation and love for our communities in Preston to conduct matters of business. O our Lord, guide our hearts and our minds in fairness, right thought and speech. Help us to respect one another's differing views and positions as we strive towards the drawing together of opinions to the one cause which is to provide a better life for the people of this city. Grant us wisdom so that our debate may reach a successful outcome. O our Lord, through your knowledge, we seek the best decision from our choices. And by your power, we seek ability from you. And we ask you from your immense bounty, for indeed you have power and you are all-knowing. Our Lord, decree and facilitate for us goodness and blessings in our decisions, in our affairs and in our livelihoods. And as we remember those who have died during this turbulent time of war across the Middle East, we pray that you grant the loved ones ease and help them enjoy their pain with patience and through your infinite mercy, oh merciful one. And we pray to you that you may heal and cure all those who are suffering. O our Lord, enable us to see the truth as truth and grant us the ability to follow it. And enable us to recognise falsehood as false and grant us the ability to refrain from it. O our Lord, take our city from strength to strength and make it a beacon of light for all. We close our prayer with your praise, O our Lord, the Lord of the world's amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. There are no plans for fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off or on silent. Rest rooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Now, members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of local government bodies' regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress, for part A items only. And as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting, anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, I would like to start by saying that the recent attack in Israel was a brutal attack and we totally condemn intolerance and antisemitism in any form. Preston is a city of sanctuary made up of many diverse communities, a city in which we pride ourselves on the strong relationships between people of all faiths and them. We have all witnessed the unfolding events in Israel and Palestine with shock and horror. In a place like Preston, global events have real local impacts. We know that there are Preston families with loved ones in the affected areas and our hearts go out to them. We are here for all of those affected and offer our support and solidarity. We want to see community tensions reduced and join those calling for peace and an end to attacks on innocent men, women and children in Israel and Palestine. Our voices join with those who call for assistance of violence, respect for international law and the initiation of dialogue as the only route to peace and just settlement for the region. Now, I would like to offer my sincere best wishes to our colleague councillor Jonathan Saxena, who is in hospital due to him not being very well recently. Let's hope he has a speedy recovery and that we see him back in the chamber with us very soon. Depending how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Now, we're going on to item number two, which is a declaration of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Can members indicate if they have any discloseable pecuniary interest or personal and prejudicial interest in the items being discussed on the agenda? Item number three, minutes of a meeting held on 24th of August 2023. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record? Thank you. Item number four is questions from members of the public and we have had seven questions submitted. All seven members of the public are here with us today and I will invite you to speak in the order of when your question was submitted. You can of course ask a supplementary after your question has been asked, but it must be related to the topic of the original. As a reminder, questions from members of the public are allocated 30 minutes and any questions not asked after that time will unfortunately have to receive a written response only. You will all receive an email response to your questions in due course. Mr. Rees, can you please ask your question?
Thank you. The Green Flag Award is a prestigious international standard for parks and green spaces, providing communities with a welcome sense of civic pride. Ashton Park has received the Green Flag Award every year since 2011. Would the current proposals for a commercially managed sports hub not cause Ashton Park to fail the Green Flag criteria?
Thank you very much for your question. And we are very, very proud in Preston that we have six Green Flag Award winning parks across the city, three of which have been included in our levelling up bid. The Green Flag Awards have been given on annual basis and winners must apply each year to renew the Green Flag status. Each site is judged on its own merits and suitability to the community it serves. And a park is judged against a criteria which includes a welcoming place, healthy and safe and secure, well maintained and cleaned, sustainability, conservation and heritage, community involvement, marketing and communication and management plans. I strongly believe that the enhanced proposal, the enhanced proposed for Ashton Park will improve our application for the Green Flag Award because it will have a positive impact on the judging criteria, including welcoming, a welcoming, warming environment, well maintained, clean, safe park with a sustainable management plan and increased community involvement. There are also a number of examples across the UK where parks which include a sports hub and an artificial pitch facility have received Green Flag Award. Just some examples in Lancashire include Stanley Park in Blackpool, Witting County Park in Blackburn and Grove Park in Bamber Bridge. With that in mind, I'm confident that if we do go ahead with the proposals, that we can maintain a high standard required on the park to maintain its Green Flag Award.
Thank you, Mr. Rees. Do you have supplementary questions?
Yes, thank you. Councillor, can I direct your attention to section six of the Green Flag Award criteria? Specifically, criterion 22, which asks for evidence of community involvement in management and development. Given that the council didn't consult park users before submitting the levelling up fund bid and that the council didn't consult them either in 2018, when it first developed its somewhat ill-named master plan. In fact, given that park users and local residents have never at any stage been asked the simple question, do you think the sports hub is a good idea? What evidence of community involvement and support do you imagine you're going to be able to produce?
There is a very similar question to this which I will be answering from one of your residents in Ashton. But bearing that in mind, we did have a consultation back in 2018 which involved stakeholders in Ashton Park. And obviously, we went to submit to the levelling up bid, which I will mention in more detail later on. We also did have three drop-in sessions which were well attended by residents as well as an online consultation, but I will go into that further detail for one of the next questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rees. Now I invite Mrs. Chapman to ask her question, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Michelle Chapman and I've got a question about Ashton Park in particular, very similar to William really, about the consultation around the 2018 master plan. And it's quite simply, when was the statement of community involvement completed in respect of the, I'm assuming it was a supplementary planning document to the local plan in respect of Ashton Park Sports Hub?
Thank you for your question. The council no longer produces supplementary planning documents for each individual development such as Ashton Park. Supplementary planning documents are usually produced for specific areas or topics such as affordable housing rather than individual developments. But just to assure you, just like any new developments in Preston, this will need to go to, to plan and be submitted. And obviously, it will need to go through the correct channels.
Thank you. Have you got any supplementary questions?
In respect of what you've just said, did the council in 2018 require this document to go forward with suggestions to the public?
As far as I'm aware, no.
...needed these to...
Excuse me, Mrs. Chapman.
Thank you.
Just ask your supplementary question, that's all. Thank you.
As far as I'm aware, no. But at the time, obviously, I wasn't the cabinet member in charge of that and obviously it was a while ago. So as far as I'm aware, no.
Thank you. Now I ask Mrs. Argol to ask your question, please.
Good afternoon. Any large project on Ashton Park will impact on the natural ecosystem. I'm assuming that a recent environmental survey has been carried out to identify the wildlife, particularly the protected species such as the bats, which would preclude the installation of floodlighting. Can you briefly tell me the key findings of the survey and what further studies, if any, are planned?
A number of surveys have been carried out to inform the designing and planning application process and these have included two bat surveys as well. As a design and layout is still being finalised and the ecological impact cannot be confirmed at this point. However, the initial indications are the project will have a significant positive impact on biodiversity of the park. The project includes tree planting and soft landscaping, which will enhance the site for wildlife and improve drainage, which will reduce flooding and improve the quality of the open space.
Do you have any supplementary questions?
With reference to the park's ecosystem, we're currently in a climate crisis. How can you equate cutting down trees, digging up grass which absorb carbon with the city and the country's commitment to reducing our carbon footprint?
As I previously mentioned, obviously, we are still in the design process of that. Obviously, it's current, I want to try and reduce that as much as possible. But just as I mentioned, there will be a net biodiversity gain on Ashton Park and that will include planting of new trees and soft landscaping as well. So there will be an enhanced gain to that, I can assure you of that.
Thank you. I now ask Mrs. Allison to ask her question, please.
Thank you. Extracted from the Preston Parks and Green Spaces Strategy 2021 to 31, section 3.0, vision states, and I quote, "to provide high-quality, sustainable green spaces which are safe, enjoyable and accessible to all. How does putting a plastic pitch, car park and sports built on pure green grass sound safe either to children or users of Ashton Park, let alone the local residents?"
And thank you for your question. The safety values of our park is incredibly important to us as a council and this is absolutely taken into consideration when finalising the design. The proposed improvements to Ashton Park will have a positive impact on the users of the park, from sports players, spectators, dog walkers, wheelchair users, children and young people. The proposed enhancements will be high-quality and sustainable. The sports hub building will replace the existing derelict pavilion and the car park and artificial pitch will have an improved access and usability of the park, bringing much needed improvements to a park that does need some investment.
Thank you, councillor Riley. Do you have any supplementary questions?
Yes, please. We already have cars from clinic, nursery, dig-in and let's grow Preston, but these are all in one part of the park. You are proposing to bring 150-plus cars onto the main part of the park. 150 cars means 300 movements. How is that safe, enjoyable and accessible to all?
I can confirm, obviously, as I mentioned in the previous answer to the previous question, we've not sort of finalised the design. So in terms of the size of the car park, I know you might have attended the drop-in sessions. That was just an idea of what it could potentially look like. Obviously, we want to ensure that the car park, if we do go ahead with the proposal, is big enough so it doesn't encourage people to park around the neighbouring streets, but also not too big, that obviously takes a lot of the park space. As I said, it's been taken up in the design and obviously that will be fed back. It's obviously us as a council, but I can absolutely assure you that we're going to try and do everything we can to try and get a strike of balance between that.
Thank you. I now ask Mrs. Winterbottom to ask your question, please.
Since the Ashton Park consultation has ended, why has Preston City Council asked Preston North End Community Trust to undertake a survey to establish if local football clubs would be interested in using the proposed new 3G pitch on Ashton Park?
Preston North End Community and Education Trust have been a part of the consultation process from the start as a key stakeholder who deliver very important community health and wellbeing outcomes for the city that aren't just football related. Due to the strict deadlines set by central government, we've had to work efficiently and effectively to collect all information together so that we, the elected members of this council, can make an informed decision. Due to their close links with the football clubs across the city and the area, they've been assisting us to link up football clubs to inform us as part of the business plan for the usage of the pitches. That business plan will be vital so those councillors can then vote on that final decision.
Thank you. Do you have supplementary questions?
Is it not the case you are still unsure of the need for another 3G pitch? Be the main football academy that would have the most use?
Proposal never received any prior community engagement. Does the council have a statement or policy with regard to community engagement? And can you explain at what point within a new project the council should engage and how that is actioned?
Obviously, this comes back to the gentleman's question, supplementary question. So obviously, you can answer that as well. The council does not have a policy or statement with regards to community engagement. Well, obviously, what this council has done, as I mentioned previously, is in 2017, the council commenced development of the current master plan for Ashton Park. And then in 2018, a number of stakeholders were consulted. Those stakeholders included Let's Grow Preston, Dig-In, Veterans and Emergency Services Group, Arms Forces, Sir Tom Funny Football Academy and the Football Foundation. The feedback from this consultation process was used to help create the design at the master plan, which then was used to submit the bid for the levelling up fund. Why is a consultation back in 2018 was not proposed just because the funding wasn't in place then? Once we received confirmation of a levelling up bid was successful, three community engagement meetings were also set up as part of the consultation process, which were incredibly well attended by residents. I attended myself and also the local councillors from Ashton and Lire and Larches were there so we could listen to residents too. There was also an online consultation which ran from the 24th of July to the 31st of October. And the consultation is still in draft form, but the outcomes of the consultation will be used as a guide to the final designs for the park that will also then be fed back within the report, which will obviously go to full council as well when making that decision. I know that some of the residents have been disappointed by the speed at which the consultation has been delivered. But unfortunately, we've had to adhere to the strict government deadlines that they've set and that's unfortunately something we've had to do. So, thank you.
Mrs. Carl, do you have supplementary questions? Thank you.
Thank you. With reference to engagement, which very small number of people within this council have made a number of expensive unilateral decisions on behalf of the majority of Preston residents?
Sorry, do you mind just clarifying the first part of that question for me, please?
Which very small number of people within this council have made a number of expensive unilateral decisions on behalf of the majority of Preston's residents?
Yes, sorry, Ash, to repeat that question. We've not made the decision, the decision yet. It's looking like that decision might be going to December for council, but we are still waiting for all that information and then as a council, we can then discuss that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carl. I now ask Mrs. Holmes to ask her question.
Thank you. A 3G pitch involves several tonnes of virgin plastic on its surface and industrial quantities of microplastic infill. Plastic particles inevitably migrate into the environment during use. It all has to be replaced every eight to 10 years. Why is Preston City Council adding to the world's plastics problem?
And thank you for your question. The issue that you raise is with the rubber, rubber crumb, which is widely used in many of the 3G pitches. And this provides the users with comfort while playing, reduced risk of injury and it also replicates the, the natural playing of real grass. This council is working very closely with the Football Foundation to ensure the impact of the artificial pitch, if we go ahead with it, is minimised. Football Foundation supports sustainable practice of the 3G and grass pitches delivery. This includes a risk management measure which will help prevent the loss of microplastics into the environment as well as significantly reducing the amount of rubber crumb used in artificial pitches. The Football Foundation for the last three years has led the industry in mitigating the environmental impact of ash turf pitches. Independent studies have shown that through good field design, operation and maintenance, infill migration from an artificial pitch can be reduced by up to 98% from typical worst-case scenarios. And since the start of 2020, the Football Foundation funded pitches have been designed to include containment measures. The Football Foundation is also committed to the safe and responsible recycling of artificial grass. As well as the terms and conditions of a grant awarded in past applications, applicants have to commit to recycling the artificial carpets at the end of life. There are also other work that the Football Foundation have done, including using less rubber infill, which has also meant that if you're sure to pile carpet where appropriate with a shock-absorbed pad, which reduces the quantity of rubber crumb infill compared to other old-fashioned pitches. But I do want to also stress as well that we are looking at other alternatives as well. That includes, as I mentioned previously, cork and also something that I've come across as well is brock filled. If we approve this project, the council will be committed to deliver a 3G artificial pitch in a sustainable manner and will continue to review best practices at all times.
Do you have supplementary questions? Thank you.
Can I just make a point that I didn't just mention the infill, I mentioned the surface, which is several tonnes of virgin plastic, but that's not my question. Could you say what is the cost of the installation, maintenance and replacement of a 3G pitch, both in financial and environmental terms?
We are still, at this moment in time, costing the whole project up as a whole. But, and obviously that does depend on, say, which sort of method we would go with in the sort of final sort of result. But one thing I want to assure people is that we will build a, if we, as I say, if we go ahead with it, we will potentially build an artificial pitch that has the ability to take and evolve with the times as well, which means it can have other uses as well as having that rubber infill too. But as I said, that's not been fully costed yet because we are still working with the designers for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Holmes. That now concludes questions from members of the public today. And I thank you all for coming to the town hall today to utilise this facility. An officer will now escort you out. Thank you. Number five. Now we will take item number five, which is the questions to cabinet members, Chair of Committees and representatives of outside bodies. Members are entitled to ask a question of any cabinet member or chair of a committee within their portfolio or terms of reference. And only one supplementary question may be asked, provided it is relevant to the original question. We haven't received any written notifications for questions for members appointed to serve on outside bodies. If anyone has any question to ask on the information items on the agenda, including the special urgency decisions, they should do so at this point as another opportunity will not be given when we reach those items. Councillor Rawlinson.
Got a question for the Chair of Licensing, councillor Dwyer. I'm asking this question as a city centre hub goer rather than as a councillor. There's a situation developing that is concerning myself and a lot of landlords, pub landlords. As you know, the hospitality industry has struggled since Covid, it's never really recovered. They're competing for a smaller number of customers. There's still, there's still peaks and troughs, but it's been difficult ever since. I want to ask the Chair of Licensing, the committee members, the officers here to work more closely with pub landlords and listen to them more because a city centre pub shut down very recently citing the licensing restrictions placed on them. It's a complex issue, it's not one thing, but it's part of it and it was the final straw, according to some. And there are other pub landlords, city centre landlords especially worried about the practices of the police licensing officer, who they feel is overzealous and is targeting some establishments. And the licensing committee have put restrictions in place on, obviously at their recommendations. So things like making city centre pubs that survive on the Saturday night trade, use plastic glasses and close early. Now, that's just a kiss of death, it's the pub's finished then, straight away. The licensing system has to work for everybody. Obviously, customers have to be safe, but it's also got to work for the council, the police and also the people who run the pubs. I'm not worried about the breweries, they'll be fine, they've got loads of money. Pub landlords often work for the brewery or they are, they work for themselves and it's a very, very tough business these days. I've seen an email recently that threatens to revoke a pub licence. That pub's already shut down. I mean, what, what is the point? I believe there's a meeting next week about a pub that has shut down. What's going on? Someone else will have that licence very soon. There needs to be some realism, we need to listen to the pub landlords more, please, and take notice and and I'm very concerned about the relationship between this police licensing officer.
Can you, excuse me, councillor Rollinson, can you ask your question, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your question, councillor Rollinson. And to be honest, a lot of the points you make, I do agree with. Let's be very clear, I'm not the Chair of Licensing or on the Licensing Committee for the reason of closing pubs. It's the last thing I want to do and I back, or High Street now back our local pubs, both in the city centre and in the suburbs. Obviously, you do allude to a specific case within your question, I won't be commenting on that specific case as it is ongoing. And you rightly mentioned that there will be a hearing on Thursday morning to do with that pub. As always, there'll be an open mind to all members of that subcommittee, including myself. We'll keep an open mind to what the licence holder says and also to the evidence that we've already been presented with and hear all sides. As a licensing authority, our priority still remains to uphold basic licensing objectives, not least principles of public safety, which I do believe go hand in hand with protecting businesses themselves and the city centre.
Do you?
Just, just to be clear, this is not about one case, that was an example. There is a feeling amongst landlords that there is a problem here and it needs looking at.
Yeah. Councillor Derry, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my question is for the leader. He joined me in congratulating the Preston Pride team on the organisation of an outstanding pride event for our city last month. It was wonderful to see so many people from across all ages and communities engaging with the speakers, performers and with the many community groups who had stalls on the day. And it was particularly special to have the first ever Preston Pride Parade, a huge logistical achievement, so I've got that to go ahead. It's particularly important for us as a city to recognise and engage with pride events as the LGBT plus community feels under increasing threat after decades of slow but steady liberalisation. Hate crimes against gay, lesbian and transgender individuals are on the rise. Those who believe that we should be suppressed, views ranging from those who want us condemned to invisibility to those who just want us condemned, are feeling increasingly emboldened to broadcast their hateful ideology. From YouTube channels to elected representatives, calls to roll back our human rights grow louder. And so it's important that we as a city demonstrate loudly, visibly, proudly that the LGBT plus community are accepted and welcomed here in Preston to help where we can allay the fears of backsliding and recrimination. So will the leader please join me in thanking the organisation, so the organisers of Preston Pride for all of their hard work and congratulate them on a successful event?
Neil, yes, obviously we do support Preston Pride. I remember 12 years ago, there was a debate about whether we should fly the rainbow flag over the town hall building. There was people who voted against that, obviously we need to have a living let me feel within this city and we support it fully. My understanding is our officers, councillor, councillors have been active and actually working with the community to make it happen. It's growing, so we're heading towards other cities where it's a big part of our life every year. And I think we've got to really do that because we've got to celebrate our diversity and celebrate the fact that we need to support all communities, whether it's LGBTQ plus, ethnic minorities, disabled communities, young, old. That's a big part of what we're trying to do. So I thank you for your part in it. And obviously as an administration, we'll continue to support it because we've got to have a a culture of tolerance and acceptance and togetherness in this city. And I think that's really essential because, you know, hatred in any form whatsoever is unacceptable and people suffer when there's hatred. So we'll continue supporting it going forward. So I do, I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, as well, you were there too, I believe. We will send our gratulations to the organisers for a brilliant event. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for that and thank you for the work that you do as a council. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming along to Preston Pride and speaking so eloquently, welcoming people to the event. I really do appreciate it. However, I would like to just ask whether you'll be encouraging your Labour group to attend next year as a group, whether as a stall or on parade. Said yourself about the importance of pride and supporting the community. I just feel strongly that it's important for the members of the LGBT plus community to see the largest party, the party that represents them here in the city council, represents most people in Westminster as the MP, is also there supporting them loud and proud on the street for pride. So I hope that you'll encourage your group to attend next year in that capacity. Thank you.
Our group were encouraged, made aware of it, we were individually, many of us at the event. There was actually two members, councillor Hindle, councillor Close, who are actually manning stalls and maybe others. So we did play an active part within it. So we'll continue to do that. Yes, obviously we do support it and we have said publicly since, I think, 2011, when we had the first one, we actively support it. So yeah, we will, I'll continue encouraging people to attend. I could possibly do it more formally next year, but I mean, we, we did get a reasonable attendance anyway. But I'm happy to work across party to do this because I think these issues of tackling discrimination and making sure we live in a firm and tolerant community is something that goes across parties. So maybe an all party effort to recover job councils to get there might not be a bad thing. Maybe a member training session around these things might not be a bad thing. So happy to work with you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bora. Sorry. Yeah, councillor Bora.
Thank you. I've got a question for, no, oh, Bora, I heard Bora, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for calling us. I want to just trigger a debate on this. My first council meeting in June 1987, newly elected, I suffered homophobic abuse from a member one of the other parties. That's the only time that's ever happened to me in this chamber. But I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that to hear the Home Secretary use homophobic language in the last few weeks reinforces my view that in Britain we are going backwards. And I welcome the words of the questioner for this question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Bora, please.
Just a question to councillor Bailey here. I was privileged to receive a magazine the other day, which was quite, quite good. And when I was reading through it, page 104, we had a very nice photograph of the mayor here about and councillor Bailey opening the new tennis courts at Moor Park and other parks in Preston. Huge investments have been made. I just wanted to ask, can you inform the colleagues here who get this magazine through their letterbox, how that event went? And what the benefits for these new tennis parks, tennis courts will be for residents? And significantly, how did the residents view this development? What, what did you gauge their feelings about these new tennis courts on these parks?
Yes, thank you very much for your question. The newly refurbished tennis courts on Haslam Park, Ashton Park and Moor Park will ensure that we deliver in offering high quality sporting facilities for residents across our city. Our old tennis courts on these three parks have been given a new lease of life for an extensive upgrade, including repainting works, new fencing, new nets and the introduction of gate access technology. After the completion of this £243,000 renovation, we hosted the official opening, as you mentioned, on Moor Park, which was attended by our mayor, council officers, representatives from the Law and Tennis Association and coaches from We Do Tennis, who put on a free range of tennis sessions. Our residents now have access to high quality tennis facilities on three of our parks across the city at a very low cost. On the day of the official opening, around 250 people had already booked on to play our newly refurbished tennis courts. There's also a concession rate of 50% for residents who are receipt of welfare benefits too. Residents can also receive free bookings between 4pm and 5pm every day, including Saturday and Sunday. We are also introducing a free tennis scheme, similar to the park run concept. This will be a volunteer led hour of free tennis on a Saturday and Sunday, which will give the local community access to the tennis courts, rackets and equipment free of charge. The first tennis session took place last Saturday and I could email around a poster to everyone so they can distribute that around as well. Our high quality new court will also host local tennis leagues and also getting people involved in friendly and social competitions in Preston. I want to thank everyone who attended, so everyone who was involved in this project getting off the ground. And I also include the thanks for the mayor for attending the official opening in what, in which was an incredibly wet and windy day. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ray. Councillor Green.
Councillor Kelly's not here, I don't think, so I'll ask councillor Brown, that's all right, thank you. Yeah, I'm sure we've all heard about, obviously, the Harris being pushed back to spring 25. I'm starting the issues, it's not really anyone's fault. But I was just wondering if we're going to incur any further costs for housing, the quite extensive collection, what that might be. Thank you.
I will provide a more detailed answer. My understanding from the conversations and information that I've received is that if there is a further cost, it's going to be minimal. The issue is unexpected things that have happened within the refurbishments. So obviously, there's been things discovered, like the lift and other things which need to be resolved. It's only a short delay, so it's two or three months, so we just feel we need to get it right. So my understanding is there's not going to be an extra cost. If it is, it's going to be very small and obviously it will be open by before spring 2015. So it's three or four months delay. So it's frustrating, worse frustrated as everyone else is, but in terms of us getting it right, we've got to do this really. And if we actually put the reopening of the Harris in line with the animated cinema, the youth zone, the mountainous house, the regeneration on Stony Gate in terms of socially affordable housing, there's a huge public led regeneration of the city. So we've got to put it into context and obviously there's issues around the Friare Gate Ring Road as well, which has been delayed, which obviously is the county, not us. So we will get it right, it's just going to take a few more months and it, my understanding is not going to be an awful lot more expense, if any. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a follow up one, I was thinking, it does seem an awful shame to see it all boxed up. Is there any possible chances of maybe pop up exhibitions or, you know, off the cuff exhibitions of showing some of it off maybe? Thank you.
We can look at all that if you want. What we have done is we've shown some members around the building and much of that's something we can offer to the entire council, just to see the progress of it. Yeah. Well, we could.
Let him, let him explain, councillor Green.
Yeah, I wasn't that clear on the question, my apologies. Yeah, we can look at all that, as you know, the library's been relocated, that the Harris is now in the community. I'll feed that back to councillor Kelly, but I think we're going to put this in perspective, this is only a few more months extra. So I just think we've just got to deal with. My understanding is a pop, being a pop as well according to councillor Hindle, so.
No.
I will get a written answer, I think, Mr. Mayor, because
Okay.
I think councillor Kelly will have this information about what we can do going forward, what extra we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ball, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for councillor Barrow, please. David, could you possibly update the council with the progress on the local development plan, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As members will know, the existing local plan was agreed in 2012. We've been working on a new local plan for a couple of years or so and certainly by opposite numbers on Chorley and South River because it's a central Lancashire local plan, have been meeting informally on a regular basis through teams meetings to make sure we push along with that. What has happened over the last few months is the government has put out detailed consultation papers to revamp the whole of the local plan system, to speed it up and to bring in a whole new system. And they are saying to us now that if you are working under the existing system, you need to have got that through by middle of 2025. And if you don't, you have to start all over again on the new system. The last meeting we had as the three authorities with the county council, we've made the decision to ensure that we will get the local plan on this side of the 2025 deadline. And certainly I think we are picking up speed to ensure that we do that. If we fail, the cost of the authority will be quite expensive because we'll have to start all over again. A huge amount of work has been done, most of the, in terms of housing allocations and allocations for commercial development in most of the three authorities, that is more or less settled, there's quite a bit, a little bit of work to be done on that. We've agreed housing allocations between the three authorities, which in Preston's case will continue to be around the 500 mark. Although we've agreed that in the first five years, we would be looking to have that figure of 600, which given that last year we saw 1,400 residential properties developed in Preston is probably sensible. And I, you know, just throwing in on the local plan, there were a couple of major applications for flat developments that were agreed in the last few months, which I did spot in the paper the last few days. The owner of those developments had sold them to another company and it did quote in the article, they will start construction next year. So that's about 600 properties, I think, altogether. So there's, there's quite a lot going on. The other thing I will just update members, we did have a discussion at our last meeting with Chorley and South River around the issue of traveller sites. Clearly, we've got one that's designated as a traveller site. There's a undesignated traveller site, which has been operated for a few years. The figures are showing that we probably need a similar number to one, what's the existing unallocated site and probably one on top of that. But the interesting discussion we did have, it was in terms of travellers moving through temporary sites. And I think one of the things that's become clear is it's not, doesn't really work to have a piece of land that's designated as a temporary site because it's very difficult to have different families on the same site. And we are looking at a model that they've developed in Leeds, which is where you speak to landowners in advance and see if you can get agreement on a number of bits of land that could be used so that if we are contacted by the traveller community, that someone's coming for a funeral or a wedding or something, we can perhaps find, get agreement so they could find somewhere to go. And we will give the backup they need in terms of refuse and sanitary arrangements. And I think that is where I think we are likely to go. And that was one of the key bits that we needed to fit in the And that was one of the key bits that we needed to fit in the jigsaw. But I think things are moving quite quickly at the moment and I'll keep members involved. And I think, having spoken to the leader of the opposition earlier, it may be on the agenda for my ONS meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any supplementary?
Mr Cook, and please, Mr Mayor. Councillor Barrow, are the other partners, South Ribble and Chorley, fairly confident? Do they share the confidence that you have about meeting the deadline of 2025?
I think all three authorities have recognised the need to speed up. Chorley have got a big incentive to get the, get it through because at the moment, they haven't got, they aren't building enough houses to meet their quota. And therefore, they're at risk of losing planning appeals. And therefore, they need to get the agreement on their figures going forward. South Ribble did have an issue because they've got an outstanding planning appeal on Pickering's Farm, was refused at committee two years ago, that went through a planning appeal over a year ago. And it's now over a year that the minister sat on it. So that decision hasn't been made. And in terms of the local plan, that decision would be crucial. But I think South Ribble have now realised we need to park that and get on with making the decision to the local plan. The risks if we don't do it for all three authorities are too great. So a few months ago, I would have had some concern about the speed in which the local plan went forward. I think all three authorities now are really keen to get it moving. And next year is going to be crucial in terms of the time scale of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrow. Councillor Morgan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is for councillor Bailey. So sorry to pick on you. I'm Freddie. And I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the success of the recent Sustainable Fashion Show that was held in Preston recently.
Can I say, I'm aware this is my eighth question. So I can only apologise to, to, to members. But obviously, I did want to report on this good news story. So we have hosted our first Sustainable Fashion Show that combined the worlds of fashion, sustainability and education. And the purpose of this event was to inspire people to embrace a more sustainable lifestyle. The day kicked off with a performance by Tenterfoot Theatre, who are an innovative eco theatre company. All in this was a question and answer session held by a talented local designer, who also showcased their original pieces, showing that, that fashion, sustainable fashion can be achieved without sacrificing style and creativity. The highlight of the event, though, was Sustainable Fashion Show. Ten diverse looks ranging from winter wear and holiday wear paraded down the runway by volunteer models. Obviously, I was going to make a joke about Peter Kelly not being, being asked to model, but maybe that's why he's not here, because he's incredibly upset about that. The outfits were created by secondhand clothing donated by Preston City Council staff and friends and their families. They were styled by a fashion student at UCLAM. And the runway showed off pre-loved fashion promoting affordability, originality and the quality of items that you can find. All of these items were then donated to the Salvation Army for reuse and recycling. Then throughout the day, there were stalls that educated passersby. These stalls included people from Climate Action Preston, Lancashire County Council and also Preston City Council staff. I just want to thank Ella and, sorry, Ellie and Georgia, who work in Waste Management in Preston, for planning this event as it celebrated sustainable fashion and showcased the collaborative efforts of organisations and individuals working towards a more environmentally friendly future and educating people on their choices in fashion and lifestyle choices. Thank you.
Are you any supplementary? Councillor Walker, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question to councillor Jennifer Meehan, health and wellbeing. Quite recently in the press and in the, in the news, BBC websites and so on, and local residents have brought to my attention that the number of vaping shops is increasing within the city. And more so, my concern is the number of vaping shops that are being allowed to open near schools. And I don't know if anybody saw the BBC article where a 12 or 13 year old girl that had died, that had a collapsed lung through, through vaping. And also the other day, there was some school in Bolton where they'd, they'd identified that even during lessons, children were, were going out of the classroom to, to vape in the toilets. It's a, it's a big concern and, and I hope that it's a considerable issue to yourselves. But do you have any, any thoughts on the, the amount of vape shops that are open within the city, close by to, particularly close by to schools?
Well, thank you very much for your question. And I absolutely share your concerns. I think it's incredible that this is being allowed to happen. And it needs government law to change things as much as anything. Obviously, we can try with education, which is not the responsibility of us at Preston City Council. And we can try with planning, but we need, we need new planning guidance and new planning laws and possibly local bylaws to restrict the number of vape shops near schools in particular, in the way that we can with hot food outlets, for example. But it needs the government to take some stronger action, I'm afraid, to be able to, to deal with this problem. Absolutely. We recently had a notice of motion at the county council regarding vaping, which I think Sue you proposed, didn't you? So we, we as local councillors are doing whatever we can. And obviously, there are some rules, but the rules aren't strong enough. And trading standards, which is the department at the county council, are very, very keen to do whatever they can. You know, they do send in test purchasers and that kind of thing. But sadly, it isn't something that we have a huge amount of control over. But we will do whatever we can, including lobbying, the government for, for change.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary?
It's not, it's not basically a question. Just, just a point I'd like to make. Perhaps you'd agree with the point. I've spoken to officers. I've tried to get in touch with the environmental officer, Natalie Beersworth Planning. And I've also spoken to Karen regarding the, the difficulties that we have and a way around it. And perhaps if, you know, we can probably get cross party support here where, yeah, we put forward a notice of motion also, you know, write to our government and, and see what, you know, we can put forward that way.
I would support a notice of motion. But as I said previously, I think it's continuous lobbying that's needed. And even then, sometimes it doesn't have the, the greatest effect. I mean, you know, there was nothing in the recent party conference that suggested that the government was prepared to do anything about vaping just yet. So we will continue to try.
Thank you, councillor Meehan. Councillor Brooks, please.
Yeah, my question is to the lead. I've been hearing some quite concerning things about the current devolution. So I was asking, can you give us an update please on the current discussions on the plans for devolution discussion in Lancashire?
Councillor Brooks, yes, I will speak on this as far as I can, because obviously, discussions have taken place and a lot of them are confidential. My understanding is that the devolution deal for Lancashire might be in the King's Speech coming up. But from our perspective, what we've had on the table so far is very disappointing. Labour districts have been arguing for similar powers to Greater Manchester. Andy Burnham has public control of the buses. We're arguing for similar things. We could do things around promoting workers' rights, sustainability and the rest of it. The issue we have, and I'm not blaming the Labour Unisus in this, because I can see why they're doing it, is that this is a, an upper tier dynamic. The districts across the ground like us were excluded from this process. That needs to change. But the Tory County Council has very little ambition, they're minimalistic, they're really letting the people of Preston or Lancashire down. And we've just got to look at the behaviour of the Tory County Council the last few years in Preston. For example, the Lancashire City of Culture bid 2025, they pulled out of that. We stepped in. If you look at the Leyton Street Traveller Site, did they have to sell that and upset the community there? They did not. We stepped in there. The youth zone, where have they been with the youth zone? We're building the youth zone. The tram bridge is the Tory County Council's responsibility. We're dealing with it. Even when we had the landslide at Brokaw's Brow, we had to step in and deliver it. So the relationship with them is not good. They are not delivering. And I think many of us Labour district leaders are of the conclusion, the only way to resolve this is ejecting them from public office next year in the general election and then a few months later in May 2025. I'm going to continue working constructively with the Conservative County Council, but the offloading responsibilities that they should be delivering on us. And through this devolution deal potentially the sheer prosperity, we got two fantastic reports coming later, could be devolved to an authority that they lead. And this will be to the detriment of the people of Preston. And in Preston, we're very radical, we're very transformative, we want to see big change for our communities. And the Conservative County Council are not delivering that. So we've got to do it on our own and try to make the best of a very bad situation. But we'll still influence them as much as we can. But I think the fault needs to be identified, that it lies with them, the county, the letting the communities of Preston or Lancashire down. And this devolution deal will be about 1/50th of what's been achieved by Labour National Mayor's within the region and beyond. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have supplementary? Thank you. Councillor Hull, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The last structural work that was done on the Harris was in the run up to the guild. And at that time, there were penalties for delay on the contract. And I asked a question of the then responsible cabinet member at each council on the progress of the work that was done in the run up to the guild. Obviously, at that time, it was far more important that there was, the work was done timely. And of course, the people of Preston love the Harris building and they see us as the trustees who are taking care of it. And it's much more important that the work is done well, rather than in a hurry. But, and these, this question's both these, there's another part to the question, but that sort of, these are for the, the leader of the council, Mr Mayor. So does the leader know whether there are any penalty clauses before delay? And that will shimmy up the, the timorous nature of reopening the Harris and taking into account, Matthew, whether time trumps quality. And then it was a great thing that today, we had lots of more members than I've seen for years in the gallery and several questions from the members of the public. One of the things that I find embarrassing is that where I'm sitting, I can see a clock that is correct. And for several months, I have asked about the clock that is seen from the gallery and by the people who we elected to represent, and it's wrong. Now, I could, it's not beyond the scope of man to mend a clock in this room. I've asked about it several times, and it seems to be a giggling matter. But it isn't a giggling matter to me, Matthew. It's symptomatic of a situation where something which is so simple and can be so easily remedied, it demonstrates to the people in the gallery that we are second best and we could easily remedy that problem. And I will ask a question at the next council and subsequently as to whether it's going to be remedied or not, because the time should be at both fingers at midnight or taken out or remedied, because looking at it half shod, to me, is aggravating in the extreme. Thank you.
Councillor Hull, thanks for that helpful question. If people see my inbox, it's not possible for me to deal with every minutia of every single aspect that's taking place within the council, including the clock not working. I didn't see the clock until I arrived before, but I will instruct our chief executive to resolve the clock. I'm not sure, I'm not going to ask him now to climb up there because it could be a bit of a health and safety hazard. In terms of the Harris, I think we've got to see the bigger picture, that it's going to be a few months. This delay is unexpected. It's due to what the main contractor's found and it's completely unavoidable. We're committed to reopen it as soon as we can. Councillor Rawlson is close to the ground in terms of any potential clause for the delay. And I'll bring him in on that because I literally do not have the information. I'll catch up with councillor Kelly when I see you next and we'll get something in writing as well. Thank you.
Have you any supplementary? Thank you, councillor Hull. Oh, sorry, councillor Martin, yeah.
I'm not going to talk about penalty clauses and things like that. There's a complex contract in place for that, for that job. As you can imagine, it's a huge job and it's a complex building. And there are constant discussions with the contractors regarding any change of works, any change of costs and who bears those costs and, and what we do about the job changing. As, as we all know, we've all, we can all see now that, you know, the job's changed in various aspects as, as they've started to go into the building. So it's complicated. And we feel at this time that the, the budget for that job is still adequate. There's a contingency built in. It's possible that we could exceed, it's possible. But we feel at this time that we're staying within budget and, and talks are ongoing with the contractor constantly regarding those changes and those costs.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Walker, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Rawlson, well aware of contracts and well aware of situations. And I do fully appreciate what you're saying there. And it all comes out in the wash eventually. But what I think as concerned councillors, we're just trying to make you aware here, is that rackers just rife around a lot of buildings in this country, some that we don't even know of just yet. But, you know, it's just obvious to everybody that there's a lot of buildings that are going to have rife. Now, I've dealt with Collins and I've dealt with other construction companies and they have a due diligence. And you'll be aware of it within the contract, the due diligence is to make sure that they've done a survey beforehand. And I'm sure they did a survey of the Harris. And I'm sure there was a lot of key principles that were pointed up. But what concerns me is that you've brought about a delay in reopening, which I understand. However, you're using the asbestos as a delay tactic. That's why it's being delayed. Now, to me, I would have thought that that would have been in the due diligence of Collins' report prior to actually taking on the construction, that there could be an issue with asbestos here. So therefore, we need to allow time. Now, I don't want to know whether that was there. You're only privy to that. Were you privy to that? Did Collins highlight it?
I think, given your knowledge of asbestos, I know that there's, well, there's only so much you can do on a survey. You, you don't start ripping into it. You, you try and judge what, what the job's going to take, because you can't, you can't go ripping into it without all, all the right equipment. And then when you do go in, sometimes things change. And, and it's not just the asbestos. It's, it's various other aspects. There've been mentioned here today. And as I said, the constant talks with the contractor about what we do, about things that have been found and how long it's going to take and the cost, they're, they're ongoing all the time. And obviously, we're disappointed that it's, you know, it's going to take a few months longer. But we think it's important to get it right. And we're still confident of hitting budget at this point.
Have you got supplementary? Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Collins are a very, very well respected company. And I'm very, very pleased that we took on board Collins as part of the Harris refurbishment. So yeah, I'm sure it'll go well.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Walker. Now, there's no more questions. So that concludes item number five. Item number six is a report on swimming support fund grant acceptance. Councillor Meehan, do you wish to move the report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I do wish to move the report. It's a very, very good, good news story. And I think the report itself is pretty self explanatory. We've worked together with GLL to bid for funding to try and mitigate the rising, incredibly rising energy costs and being successful in that funding bid. We have to, the laws of the fund say that it's the local authority is the accountable body. So this report is our. So this report is asking council to accept the funding into our accounts. We will then after appropriate grant funding agreements with GLL, we will pass the funding to them. The report also asks for the council to delegate responsibility for that to the director for communities and wellbeing. I think it's fantastic that we've got this money. It's fantastic that the fund was created. And we worked very, very hard with GLL and we're successful. But I would also like to add, this is just phase one of the funding. There is a phase two, which offices, together with GLL, have been working on. And that phase two is for some capital funding to help put in energy efficient measures into the leisure centres. So hopefully council will approve this and it will, you know, safeguard swimming for the people of Preston in the public for some time to come.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any amendments? No. Is councillor Matthew, do you want to speak on that? Yeah, okay. Can we now have a vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Item number seven is a report on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund Plans for Investment. Councillor Brown, do you wish to move the report?
Mr Mayor, I do. Thank you so much. This is really an update report, even though there are some decisions that need to be taken. Obviously, the money's been secured through the Shared Prosperity Fund. Ambitious plans we have, especially to forward our community wealth building agenda, this money will invest in delivering our climate change ambitions and taking forward a climate jury to help shape the work needed to protect future generations. So a big part of what we're doing with council head and show is setting up this climate jury, which will engage communities about how we move towards net zero. The creation of a digital cooperative in the city is going to be part of these plans. And also money going to support households to reduce their energy costs over the winter. We see how winter after winter, many sections of our society really struggle with the costs of heating their homes. And obviously, there's going to be work done around Ria to make sure that they have access to energy efficient measures and the rest of it. And we're delighted as well that we've been able to focus on things that matter the most and the most vulnerable in our communities. Again, particularly excited the fact that the council is actually going to be getting into the market and helping establish a digital cooperative. It's very radical what we're trying to do. We're actually going to be providing low or low cost or free wifi to individuals and communities in the most deprived areas, a digital broadband service. And then the idea is that will scale up. It will be an alternative provider in common ownership, which we then get support from in our communities. Because the current broadband market doesn't really have Preston based locally owned providers. And we think this will be something that will be democratic, popular and will actually provide an infrastructure and tackle digital exclusion. So, Mr Mayor, the decision required is at two point one. There's five sub points of it. Obviously, this is money that's been allocated already through shared prosperity. We're excited about these plans and again, it will do a lot to tackle inequalities. So it'll be tackling the climate emergency, energy efficiency, so people have more efficient, cheaper homes to live in and digital inclusion, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Hull. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Sorry? Yeah. Yeah.
Mr Mayor, just a quick question about page twenty eight about the climate jury. Could you just explain a bit more, please? About what the jury involves as opposed to assembly and why ten thousand pounds of extra funding is needed for that, please? Thanks.
Yes, I will bring councillor Headshaw in on this because she's a bit close to the ground if that's possible. Thank you. Over to you.
I've obviously not pressed my mic on for a while. I was pressing the wrong button. Yeah, it it's a shame that this costs as much as it does and I was quite horrified, I've got to say. So the difference between an assembly and a jury is size. So we will have about thirty people that will be representative of the city. So it will be all, it'll be all ages, ethnicities, genders, faith, you know, it could be a real good cross section of Preston that will sit in this jury, will be part then, will help to take part in the decision making process as to how we will become net zero carbon by twenty thirty. It costs as much as it does because we've got to make it truly representative. We've got to get people on board. You know, part of declaring a climate change emergency was to bring people on our journey with us. And this is a way of doing it, you know, we're not stuffy people sitting in an office totally separate from our communities. Well, a major part of our communities and we want to bring them on our journey. And I wish it didn't cost this much money. I really did. But this is the only way to get it done properly. You know, the company that are operating this for us have got experience with it. They know what they're doing and it does nothing's free, is it? So, so, yeah, it's really exciting. I'm really excited about this. I hope you are too. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I just, yeah, it was just, it just seems like a lot of money and there wasn't really any detail on what that additional cost was for. And I just wondered whether that, you know, you know, climate change is important to my heart. But I was just wondering if there could be more tangible benefits, you know, is ten thousand pounds really the best use of that money? Or could we do a bit more tree planting or tree cooling in the city centre, for example?
It's really hard to answer that. I mean, we were hoping we'd have a climate assembly of a hundred people. But it was just going to cost three times as much for that. So this is how much it costs sadly. And we want to do it properly and it does cost. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a quick question from this report is it talks about digital inclusion. And I know there is a bit patchy in the rules. Is there some funding that you would be able to produce to help digital inclusion in the rural areas?
We will look at that, yes, of course. I mean, the whole idea behind a Preston digital cooperative business is it will be for the whole of Preston. So that will include Ribbleton, Deepdale, it will also include Grimsor, Longridge. So, you know, so it'll be available to everyone. The idea is we tackle digital inclusion wherever it is. As you know, there tends to be more deprivation in the city areas, but obviously there's levels of deprivation in rural areas as well. So we'd be open to a conversation about how it can help the entire community. That's the idea behind it. A lot of what's going to happen, it's going to be recycled devices people might get for free at low cost. Going into community groups, community organisations offering free wifi, free wifi to individuals and other community groups. They exist in rural areas as well as city areas. So happy to have that conversation. But this is a very early stage. Obviously, Sir has written the report as director. So obviously, myself, Sir, we'll be happy to have a conversation about how we can facilitate that.
Thank you, Mr Brown. Any supplementary on that? No? Okay, so are there any amendments on this? No. Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, Iskari. Item number eight is a report on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund Skills Commissioning Plan. Councillor Brown, will you be moving the report?
Yes, I will do, Mr Mayor. Again, this is a very substantial report in terms of the investment that's going into our communities in skills. It's one point one million pounds, which is pretty substantial. And again, it's from the shared prosperity pot. This, the report sets out plans to give us one point one million programme provision in skills and training for our residents through the delivery of the shared prosperity investment plan. It's going to cover a number of areas, that support for young people to access education, training and employment. Support for economically inactive residents aged twenty five plus to access education, training and employment. Community courses, activities and individual support that promotes positive mental wellbeing. Basic digital literacy support and training to residents who are digitally excluded. And ESO support and training in the in the community. The idea behind this is we upskill the people who need to be upskilled, that we target the areas where low income is the most predominant within our communities and we work with providers, existing providers and new providers to ensure we upskill the residents. A big part of that is ensuring people get out of low paid gig economy jobs and into decent employment, especially with the large institutions who are working with us as partners, as part of community wealth building. Very keen as well, Mr Mayor, to ensure that when we do go through the commissioning route, as well as the established larger providers within Preston, that our voluntary sector organisations, especially those that represent minority communities, the disabled, young and old, et cetera, et cetera, have a big opportunity to take part in this because they're very much working at the grassroots and they're very much delivering for our communities. So we want to make sure we have markets created in which the existing voluntary sector organisations and charities could play a big role within Preston in this. Because they've got a huge amount of knowledge and experience in how to deliver these benefits and changes. So the actual funding is at paragraph two point one. And there's ten bullet points about how that's going to be divvied up. But again, this is part of the wider shared prosperity set of policies and and aspirations that we do have for the communities, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Is that seconded? Any questions? No. Are there any amendments? Can we, can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Item number nine is a report on an amendment to the constitution and scheme of delegation. Councillor Borough, will you be moving this report?
Yes, Mr Mayor. This is a fairly straightforward item. Under the current constitution, it's only the taxi miscellaneous committee that can revoke or suspend taxi licence for either a black cab driver or a private hire vehicle. Over the last few months, we've been working to review how taxi licensing works. One of the things that we looked at seriously is the potential for a situation where the revocation or suspension of a licence needs to be made immediately rather than waiting until the next meeting of the committee. And this constitutional amendment will simply put that right by allowing that delegations to go to the deputy chief executive and director of community and wellbeing, so they can make those decisions. If the driver wants to appeal against that, it would be as if it had gone to the committee, so it'd go to the magistrate's court. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Row. Is that seconded? Yes, thank you, councillor Brown. Are there any questions? Councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I'm a taxi driver and I'm no good. An enforcement officer comes along and kicks me out. So I get in the car, I go to Wolverhampton, I get a licence from Wolverhampton, I go and get my Uber magnet and put it on the side of the thing and carry on as an Uber driver. So it's not really enforced anything, is it? Is there something else that you need to be doing?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Secretary of State, he used to pull his finger out. I listened to all the representations that have been made from councils across the country. I heard something from Greater Manchester where there are nine thousand Wolverhampton taxis. Government could put it right, but as with so many things, government isn't working. They aren't doing things right. Your previous point was another example of where the government wasn't putting things right. So sooner we get a different government that can put things right, the better. Thank you.
Yeah, so likewise, you know, a cross party again, notice of motion with regards to this, by all means, you know. Let's, let's write to the letter and let's, you know, badger them.
Thank, thank you. If no more question, are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Item number ten is a report on achieving Preston's priorities media review. The appendix to the report was not available at the time the report was published. However, I'm accepting it as urgent as members need to be a praise of the media progress against the council's priorities. Councillor Rawlinson, will you be moving the report?
Thank you, yeah. The report is only for noting, it speaks for itself. It's a very good report. Obviously, the appendix did come quite late, but the finance team are doing so much work. It's, it's the most incredible time for this council, really. We're delivering over a hundred million pounds worth of projects all at once. We're either at the beginning, some of those processes are in the middle of them and the staff, the legal team, the finance and all the departments working incredibly hard to deliver those projects to tight government deadlines to spend some of the funding. So it's just, it's probably the biggest thing this council's ever done for this city, certainly for the last fifty years. Even if you compared, you know, fifty years ago, this council built the bus station, the Guild Hall and the Market Hall, within a few years. Even if you change those figures to today's numbers, it probably wouldn't come to what we're spending now. And obviously, council had that money at that time and they had capacity to do it. It was golden age of local government to some extent. And yet we're delivering this off the back of an age of austerity after a global pandemic, having won most of that funding. Not all of it, obviously, a very big chunk of it is we're delivering ourselves at the cinema. So it's just, it's just an amazing time and you will see the forecast has worsened since February. A lot of those figures are predicated on what we, what we expect it will cost us to borrow next year or whenever we have to finally borrow the money to pay for the leisure complex. And even, even a slightly better deal for us would, could virtually wipe out that deficit on its own. We're also trying to guess how much staff pay rises will be over the next three and four years. And of course, we're in a cost of living crisis. Staff are getting bigger pay rises because, you know, they were frozen for years as well. So it's, it's a difficult time to forecast. Everyone knows that this labour group will not go out and cut jobs and services on ifs and buts. We won't do that. We will, if we have to find savings, it will be done carefully. And we won't be doing, we won't be cutting anything unless we absolutely have to. So this report is very useful and it will help us form our plans over the next few months.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you. Thank you, councillor Brown. Any questions? No. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, Iskari. Item number eleven is a report on a change of date for the council budget meeting two thousand twenty four. Councillor Rawlinson, will you be moving the report?
Yeah, it's a simple moving of the date of budget council due to the timing of the LCC council meeting, really. We have to wait until all the other authorities have set theirs because we are, you know, the precepting authority. Which puts it on the twenty ninth of February, which is unusual date, but I'm hoping we're not going to have any marriage proposals that day.
Is that seconded? Thank you. Any questions on this? Any questions on this? Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Is carried. Thank you. Item number 12 is a notification of changes to the membership of committees. Are there any changes to be reported? Yeah, Councilor Brown?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, it's actually an outside body, so just for information, Council Cootman stepped down from the Community Gateway Association early, so she's got, she had a year left to serve as a councillor, Nathan will replace her for the, until, no, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 13 is the leaders' report. Councilor Brown, do you wish to speak on the report, which is for noting only? Thank you. Can we now note the item? Thank you. Item number 14 is special urgency decisions, but there are none to report to this meeting. The next meeting of full council will be held on Thursday, 14th December 2023 at 10am, 10am, in the Town Hall, Preston. Please note the change in the time of this meeting. Now, we need to consider passing the following resolutions, that the public be excluded from this meeting during consideration of the following item of business on the grounds that there is likely to be disclosure of exempt information, which is described in the paragraphs of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972, which is specified against the headings to each item, and that in all the circumstances of the case, the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing it. Are you all happy to agree the exemption and move to part B? Show offence. Thank you.